All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the Monday, December 4th, 2023, a regular meeting of the Lancaster Select Board. Reminder first that this is being recorded and broadcast through our friends at Sterling Lancaster Community Television. And we will begin with a roll call vote. Mr. Allison.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan, here. So we're all here, ready to go. First item on the agenda, we have a packed agenda tonight. We have a few scheduled things which are important to keep to those times. So if we have, as we do in the past, if we have something that finishes early, we will jump to later in the agenda and try to clear some of our permits and applications and things and other items as well. The three scheduled items that won't be moved will be 6:05 poll hearing, 6:15 tax classification discussion, and then our executive session that'll be at 7:00 p.m. We will be, if necessary, returning after executive session, if it is necessary. Okay, so first item is approval of the minutes from our November 20th meeting.
I'd offer a motion to approve the minutes of November 20th, 2023.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's missing a couple of the records I put in. I'd ask that they get added. Send them to you after the meeting.
Uh...
They did not get included.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm asking a couple of records get added that weren't reflective in the minutes.
Okay, I'll have to look at what you sent me. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Are we approving or are we...
Oh, your amendment? Is there a motion to amend?
Yeah, a motion to amend to table to next meeting.
Okay. Then we will table to next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. We're tabling to the next meeting. Okay. All right. 6:02, so we still have time before our 6:05. We will jump to licenses and permits, if the board is willing to do that, which is section six. We have an item to review and take action on the following ABBCC licenses for 2024, which is Michael's Bridge Diner, retail license to sell wine and malt, and common Victor license.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Um, second?
Is there a discussion?
Just catching up to the comments. Sorry.
One more time?
I'm just catching up to the comments because they were...
Comments on the license rule?
On that one looks good, I think, as I recall.
Okay, that's the one that's before us.
Is that...
That's Michael's Bridge Diner.
Yes, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 May I continue one question?
We're in the middle of the vote.
Well, I know that, but I have a question that would be opportune at this time. I mean, it's better than after.
Well, we're literally in the middle of the vote, so we have to either finish the vote, and you can make a comment after when we...
Okay, I still have a question, so I'll say nay, just so I can ask my question.
Okay, so that's two to one to approve the license for Michael's Bridge Diner. Yes?
My question, I have no problem with them adding the wine and beer license.
They've had one, haven't they?
They were, well, my question was, I thought they were a full alcohol license.
Whatever is on the pass.
Yeah, it's their license, yeah. This is what they've applied for, and we just...
And can we re-vote?
No, cannot.
Okay.
Okay, it's 6:04. I'm assuming if it's the board's, well, I don't want to assume. Would it be the board's desire to take up the other renewal applications on block, or one, all 17 of them, one at a time?
Yeah, I'm good with doing them all at once.
And I do have some questions here and there, so...
So we will take those up later. And now it is 6:05. I thought we could have snuck those right in, but nope, it is 6:05.
Spoiler.
Your word, not mine. Okay.
I would move under the provisions of chapter 166, section 22 of the general laws, and any additions there to amendment thereof. A public hearing is scheduled for Monday, December 4th, 2023, at 6:05 p.m. in the Nashway Meeting Room located in the second floor of Prescott Building, 701 Main Street, Lancaster, and Zoom link. To consider petitions submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc., request permissions to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways.
Harvard Road.
So is it Harvard Road National Grid to install one JO pole on Harvard Road, beginning at a point approximately zero feet east of the center line of the intersection of Route 70, and continuing approximately 190 feet in an east direction, installing one JO pole number 0-75, approximately 190 feet from the intersection of Route 70. So do we move to enter a joint meeting here?
It is not a joint meeting, it is a hearing. So you've made the motion to enter a hearing?
Yeah.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
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 All right, we are now in a hearing. So now, Mr. Morales, is that you?
Hi.
For National Grid?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, my name's Javier Morales. I'm here with National Grid, representing National Grid. Looking, seeking the approval for a grant of location for the pole that you mentioned, 0-75 on Harvard Road. The purpose of this pole is to provide service to the customer that's installing a business at 16 Harvard Road. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Morales?
None from him. I don't have any.
No, we're asking if they have any questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
None from him, none from me. Alex?
Mr. Morales, this is a new pole, just to service the business?
Correct, yes.
Okay, right, okay. I do have a procedural question.
What is your procedural question?
Mr. Chair and Town Administrator Hodges, I am in a butter to this. Should I confuse myself? I know it's a public issue.
If you believe you have a conflict...
It's your puppets, your choice.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem.
In the letter of the law, you don't benefit...
You don't benefit financially.
Financially, but whether you can feel like you can be impartial is up to you.
I always better say than sorry I asked the question. Yes, I can be impartial, and it's a great idea.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Morales? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the poll application as submitted?
At the point of order, this is a hearing. You need to ask the residents if they have anything? I don't, I don't know.
Do we? Any public comment on the poll? Any online, throw your hand up? All right, seeing none, I guess we close the hearing first, let me have a vote. Yes?
Yes.
Could I close the hearing and then vote? Yes, I move to close the public hearing for the petition of joint meeting and to declare locations as stated here.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed, and now we will entertain a motion to approve or not approve this poll.
I move to approve the installation of the JO pole, as noted in the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Turner, aye. Congratulations, Mr. Morales. Have a nice day.
Okay, thank you for your, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
You too. Be well.
Thank you, bye.
All right, we have six minutes before...
This is awkward, the idea.
I actually like it. You don't like it? We're not moving it right now. All right, so we have six minutes before our hearing on tax classification, so let us move...
Switch sides.
Let us move on to...
I just want to make a... I'm sorry.
Let us move on to the other license applications. How about this? Can you tell us any ones you have concerns with, and then we'll do the rest of them on block?
Certainly.
Which ones do you have concern? And you don't have to tell us the concerns right now, we'll get dig into those in a minute.
Well...
Just tell me by the number that's listed there, 1 to 72.
So I didn't arrange it that way, so let me just...
No, it's there. Arranged on the agenda that way.
I understand that. So let me do this. Why don't we work cooperatively, and I will tell you...
That's what I'm asking.
We are, and I will tell you what my concerns were, and then you can just note the number.
But I just asked if you can list off the number, which numbers will hold those into the rest on block. This isn't that hard.
Hold on, no, 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 it is, actually. So let me go back and forth. I think you just knock, you can just do it. I was doing it by name, by point.
Great, then the names are right here, just tell us which ones.
Hold on a second. Ira Toyota Route 2, number, hold on, let me find it.
That's why I can find it, you keep going with the next one.
Oh, good, yes, okay. Cadet and Nadro LLC.
I'm assuming you meant Coke Route 2 Toyota?
Well...
That's the one that's still on here.
The climate was about Ira, so that would probably be the same one.
That's not the same company. Go ahead, what else?
Okay. Cadet and Cadet and Nadro LLC, Dunkin' Donuts.
So Dunkin' Donuts.
Kalen Farms.
Okay, what else you got?
B&amp;M Investments.
Kalen Farms isn't on here.
I think I saw it on there, and I did read their application.
It's not on here. So what else?
Hmm, okay.
It's just not on the list I'm looking at anyway. So there's no risk, if it's on this list, it's a risk, we're gonna accidentally approve it if you still have concerns. So I've got Dunkin' Donuts, Coke Route 2 Toyota.
Okay.
And...
Um, hold on.
Yep.
Catching up to you there. Kimball Farms at Oak Ridge.
Except Kimball Farms.
And this little bit.
Any others?
Yes.
Okay.
Coke, Ty, Coke, again.
That's the one I already know.
And United Ag and Turf.
United Ag and Turf, it's not listed here.
Okay.
I don't know what, yeah.
I'm just going by the comments that were in the packet. Crawford, Crawford, Crawford.
That's why I asked you to go over the list here.
Okay.
Who here? Crawford?
Crawford Truck Sales.
Who else?
John Duplee's, Sandy's, is that on there?
Sandy's is on here, yeah. We're eating, you're doing a great job of eating up the time we have until the hearing, so that's good.
I do my best.
Well, I would, it would be helpful if you had concerns, and we come with those already.
They're ready, they're ready. Didn't know the format. They are quite ready.
All right, that's it. So those five?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Well, hold on. So I will entertain a motion to approve on this agenda, items number 1, 4, 5, or 1, 4, 6, 7, 9 through 16.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a real quick discussion. Route 117 Used Auto Parts.
Yep.
Been there a number of times, get nuts and bolts, great, great business, great gentleman who owns it.
Awesome.
True.
Okay.
I do have...
I also like Murph's Hot Dog Truck.
Isn't that awesome?
Get the Doritos, the Doritos.
I don't do that, and I go to Combi's, I go to Combi's all the time, and Trolley Stop makes the Trolley Stop Special. That is amazing, so...
So many good businesses on this list.
All right, so any further discussion?
Question, is Sterling National Country Club on your list?
It is. It wasn't on yours, though. So now it's part of the motion to approve.
So could I, could we discuss that one as well?
So would you like to make an amendment to the motion to approve, to strike number seven?
Number seven, sure. I'll make an amendment to strike number seven.
Second.
From the list, okay. All those in favor of the amendment, aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor of the underlying motion, aye.
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 Okay. Well, that took...
We have one minute.
Painstakingly amount of time.
Would you like me to discuss?
No, I don't, not with the one minute we have remaining, no.
Okay.
So we are about to embark on some other fun for our public hearing on tax classification that will begin at the end of the sentence, whenever that is.
I'll read slow.
Yeah, read very slowly as we start.
Notice of public hearing, tax classification for fiscal year 2024, in accordance with GL, chapter 46. The Select Board will conduct a public hearing on the question of adoption of percentages of the total tax levity borne by each class of real property, residential, commercial, industrial, open space, and personal property for fiscal year 2024. The hearing will be held as a hybrid meeting and by Zoom link on Monday, December 4th, 2023, at 6:15 p.m. All interested parties are invited to attend and be heard. Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Floor is yours.
All right.
Oh, oh, floor is David's. David, please state your name and where you're coming to us from.
Hey, I'm David Menzelholm, your regional assessor with Regional Resource Group, working in conjunction with Bobby Joe, who is in your audience there.
Indeed.
I don't know, do I have the ability to share my screen so everybody watching?
If you don't, you will soon.
Yes.
Just making a call. Not done.
I don't know. It's hostess, eh?
Yeah, hold on, sorry. Okay.
Should have it now.
Let's see. Make everybody see that.
Yes.
Right. Did you make it a little bit bigger?
Yeah, can you make the text bigger?
Little bigger?
A little bigger would be great.
All right.
There we go, perfect. Thank you.
So this is the same packet that the Select Board should have from, for anyone that's new, we're just, basically tonight, we're starting here, step six, seven, and eight. Step one was started back in January with all the town budgetary process, and then finalizing that at a town meeting. Steps two through five, Bobby Joe and myself worked with Department of Revenue to get all those things finalized, and we'll discuss some of that as we go through step six through eight. All right, so we're here, there's a misconception with some folks that the Select Board votes on the tax rate, you're not voting on the tax rate, you're voting on what classes pay what percentage of your overall levy that's about to be raised. So what is a levy? Item number one, tax levy is the amount of property taxes to be raised. The levy amount is determined by the budget, the total amount of the approved budget less revenues from other sources like motor vehicle excise, municipal fees, state aid, is the amount raised from property taxation. So for fiscal 2024 in Lancaster, we are looking to raise $24,56,507.8. This represents a 9.04% increase over last year's levy of $22,61,020.63. Levy ceilings, the levy ceiling, this is where part of what Prop 2 and 1/2 is, basically is our total taxable value, which you see at $1,377,806,820. 2 and 1/2% of that represents your levy ceiling, so you cannot appropriate more than the New growth, new growth are only property taxes derived from newly taxable properties like new construction, additions, renovations, subdivisions, and new personal property that is picked up from businesses within the community. For fiscal year 2024, our new growth revenues, this is not the valuation, this is the taxable revenues, is $191,532. This has been certified by Department of Revenue, which you saw up above was the earlier steps from tonight. What is the levy limit? That is calculated by adding 2 and 1/2% to the previous year's levy limit plus new growth. So for fiscal 2024, that number is $24,63,723. So how do we do this math? Right here, you'll see in the little grid, we start with fiscal '23, its levy was $21,158,44. You add in Prop 2 and 1/2, that's we, $528,771, our new growth revenues. And then this year, you had voted in an override of $1,200,000, so that is new from last year. So that increases your levy. And then you have excluded debt, so that gets added on to the above numbers, which gives you your total maximum levy right here of the $24,63,723. You will be appropriating all but $7,215.92, that is our excess levy capacity. So valuations, this is what we're here to discuss and determine how we're gonna do a shift. So currently, our residential makes up 87.1% of your taxable base in Lancaster. That is up from 86.82 last year. Our CIP, which we'll talk about throughout the night here, is commercial, industrial, personal property. That only makes up 12.9% of your taxable base, that is down slightly from fiscal '23. So where do I get all these valuation numbers and percentages? Those are derived from the assessor's report that we call an LA4, which is a summary of all the property classes with a total parcel count of each and total valuation of each. Anything beginning with the 1 is our residential class. You do not have open space in Lancaster. 300 class is commercial, 400 class is industrial, and then the mixed uses, chapter lands, and personal property also will fall into the commercial categories. So the summary of these columns are what you see up above here of our total valuations per class. So typically, a community that's looking to shift the burden to your CIP would have a percentage that, more in the 25 percentage mark here, you can see we're less than half of that. So it's not typically recommended to do a shift when you're less than 25% because you have to do a very aggressive shift in order to make up anything that would be a sizable benefit for your residential classes, which we see down below here. So a single tax rate right now for fiscal '24 is coming in at $17.46. That's an increase from fiscal 2023 from $17.19, largely and part because of the voted-in override of the 1.2 million. So this is what I was talking about, where you have a smaller CIP base. I highlighted 39%. So to only make an increase to an average single-family value of 2 and 1/2% on their tax bill from last year, you would have to shift 39% to the commercial base, and you can see on a single rate, the average commercial bill is estimated to be $15,000. Shifting 39% would increase that over $5,000 on your average commercial property in town with a tax rate of $24.27. So real hard hit on your CIP, folks. So average single-family value, this is simply just taking our total single-family valuation in town divided by the total number of single-family properties. So it's kind of a fictitious number, but it just gives you a sense of what the taxes are doing and what valuations are doing from fiscal year to fiscal year. So as everyone knows, it's been a very aggressive real estate market out there. So our average value has gone up from 456 to up to 4888. That's roughly an 8% increase, sorry, 7% increase, I believe, on the value, but with the overriding tax implications, you're gonna see about an 8.83% increase on your tax bill. So average tax bill is gonna be around $8,500, up from the $7,800 in fiscal '23. So the Board of Assessors continues to recommend that the Select Board adopt a single tax rate with a shift factor of 1.0. Don't feel that there's a large enough percentage on your CIP in town to make it beneficial. You also largely write the farm community in Lancaster, a lot of Chapter 61 parcels, which would be affected by a higher tax rate. So we're recommending the single tax rate at $17.46 for all classes. And that is all I have, and I'll open it up to questions from the Select Board.
All right. Colleagues, any questions for David?
No questions for you.
This does not, you can ask a question at other times, but we also, we asked any other residents who wanted to make comments as well, but...
I'll hold my questions until...
Well, if you have questions for David, now is the time.
It's all right.
Okay, does anyone have anything they'd like to offer?
Roy?
I'm being funny, because Roy was very nice to tell us the whole question. David, we have to unshare your screen now.
There you go.
Name and address, please, Roy.
Sure, right. I'm Roy Rezak, 125 Harvard Road, speaking as a private citizen. First question would be, thank you for that very good presentation. I'd like to ask if we can get a copy of that so that we can review that and make comments. I think that'd be very helpful.
It's in our packet, yeah.
It's in? Okay, fine. All right.
So Steve already asked, and it's been answered. Perfect.
Thank you for that. Yeah, quick response. So in the past, we have, Lancaster has proposed and kept our tax rates at one, one uniform rate across all properties, classifications. You've heard the consultant's input, all right? That point that he makes is made by many consultants to many towns, all right? There's a comment in terms of quite often, the factor we use to make this decision is to keep the town perceived to be business-friendly when people look to possibly move in. If it's kind of an equal tax rate, it doesn't put additional burden on commercial and other types of classifications. Competitive position relative to other towns, we don't want to be excessively high in terms of our taxes. Negative impact on farms, the consultant mentioned that kind of concern, and kind of the feeling that if we don't make any significant change in our current tax rate, then nothing significantly is impacted because we're kind of maintaining the status quo. Well, I'd like to talk about that and comment that when we look at the tax rate classification, my feeling and my senses and from the data I've looked at, if you go to the next page, Kate, please, that we need to take a multi-year and comprehensive view of what happens with tax rates and where the taxes come from. The following table shows how valuations and percentage of taxes paid have changed by classification since 2020. You'll note that the bottom line, the bottom percentage here in terms of 87.9% to be paid by residential customers is exactly what our consultant mentioned, and the 12.91 to be paid by commercial entities is the same thing. The interesting point here is that if you look at this and look at what the total valuation has done here in town, it has gone up dramatically by $332 million in the last five years, or about 38%. I spent some time and factored out the new growth, okay, which is, was $45 million for residential, and it gives us about an overall 33% growth in terms of the current, the comment would be, the current... the comment would be, the current unchanged houses in Lancaster would be up about 33% in terms of their assessed value and linearly then the impact on their taxes. Interestingly, in terms of the commercial, industrial, and personal property, that overall increase, while it has gone up, when you look at what the new growth number has been, the overall after-new growth has actually gone down. And my observation is, I don't have all the tax bills, but it appears to me that most commercial properties in town are paying less now than they did before, okay? Because their, in general, their overall property taxes have been gone down by 19, well, assessed value, I'm sorry, has gone down by 19.687 million. So factoring out that new growth was a comprehensive thing we needed to do rather than just look at the numbers in terms of what has been the total increase here. So the question now is, what's caused this? Why did the numbers in Lancaster go up and we didn't do anything, okay? If you go down and look at this, it seems to me that the reason why the growth of the assessed value of current homes in Lancaster has gone up is because of a couple main factors. And from what my research has indicated, the first one is the follow-on effects from COVID in terms of people working from home. Homes in Lancaster are much more attractive now that people don't have to every day commute all the way into Boston or other places, can work from home, these types of things. This has pushed market prices up and, you know, the valuations we would do would go, would rise linearly with those market prices. That's what we have to do by state law. Relative to commercial and industrial property, the follow-on from COVID has pushed demand down for office space, these kinds of things. We all hear the stories, you know? Thank goodness we don't live in San Francisco, okay? In addition, what happens is, you know, the market prices on these buildings are going down due to vacant offices, et cetera, which is going to drive valuations down. The second point is the higher interest rates we see, which for residential homes means really people aren't, there are few sales because people aren't moving. Nobody wants to give up a 3% mortgage to take on a 7.5% mortgage. Valuations don't move around a whole lot, though if there are individual sales here and there, the assessors will take that into account. Relative to the commercial properties, most commercial properties have to show positive cash flow, and they quite often have problems as the interest rates go up, particularly if they have a variable rate mortgage and things like this. And sometimes then they have to sell the properties at distressed prices because they just can't afford to keep it. And that drives valuations down, as you've seen up on top. Well, the interesting point is, if you would page up just a little bit here, Kate, the two, a little bit farther, right there, okay? The 2% increase that we're seeing in the percentage of total taxes paid by residential is going in the direction that we all, that many of us said at the last town meeting, we did not want to achieve. We wanted to increase our tax rate diversity. We wanted to reduce the percentage paid by residential properties. Over the last five years, we have been going in exactly the wrong direction. And we need to take a look at this and decide what to do. How do we address that? So that's a main point here from my point of view. We're going in the wrong direction by maintaining the status quo. We need to make an adjustment. We need to make a change. So on the next page, if you go to the next page, Kate. So based on this comprehensive, you know, multi-year analysis, I'm recommending that we change our tax rate to a 16.79%, 16, I'm sorry, $16.79 for residential. We'll save about $200 for the average home. And raise CIP to about 20.15. And let me walk down in terms of what the impacts will be. You've heard the consultant's input. My comment is, we also have to look at the fact that our current tax diversity is going in the wrong direction. We need to make a change. We need to do something. What steps are we going to take? I've made this proposal here to achieve a reduction in residential taxes, to start diversifying our tax base, and to negate, and the negative impacts I'm going to maintain are small. We'll talk about those in a minute. Relative to being business-friendly, on a $1 million building that's assessed at $1 million, this would only raise their taxes by about $3,000 a year. That's relatively small in terms of their total expenses for that building. It's not, in my mind, for being in business, it's not a pivotal factor in terms of no one in town who had a million-dollar building would decide based on that factor alone to move to another town. It's just too small. It's probably, we could talk about electric rate changes, but, you know, it's probably somewhere in that noise level. Second point is competitive positions relative to other towns. I looked at 18 towns around us and our tax rates compared to others. We're 11th right now. There are 10 other towns that are better than us, and people would go to those towns because they're simply better no matter where we, you know, even if we stay at a one fixed, one fixed rate. If we changed to what I'm proposing here, it would change us to 13th, which is only two more down the, down this order in terms of where we are compared to others. And only Bowman and Stowe would be above us then. The other ones like Sterling and Clinton and others are still way above us, and people would factor that in first. Negative impact on farms was brought up by our consultant.
Were you saying you'd go from 11th to 13th?
Yeah, we'd go from 11th in the position of 19 of us. There's 18 other towns. To 13th? Yes. I can provide that table if you want. Okay, all right. Next point is negative impact on farms. Particularly, we're concerned about small farms. We don't want to raise taxes a lot on small farms. This change would, would only raise taxes $1,020 total on the 45 Lancaster 61A-only farms. 61A farms are in general the small farms, small family farms. There are other larger farming and harder cultural entities we have in town. Some of those are, have an assessed value in the 850 to a million-dollar range. Those would pay, yes, a higher tax rate, but those are much bigger businesses. They're not a small family farm, okay? And finally, in terms of no significant change on any group's taxes if we just stay where we are, my observation is over five years, we have quietly crept up another $200 in terms of residential taxes. So my recommendation, if you go to the next page, my recommendation is to, that we increase, that we increase the tax on commercial, industrial to $20.15. I think the impacts are small. It's about $3,000 on a million-dollar. And there are minor impacts on family farms. Residential, we'd go to 16.79, would save about $200 average on the average home, and would get our tax diversification. At least we get back to where we were, and now we can work from there. And in the future, when I, when we have to look at these kinds of issues, as we've shown, when we're looking at the new high school, as we, when we look at this, I had to look at several factors to figure out what's happening here. These external factors in terms of real estate markets are changing what's happening to us in terms of taxes here in Lancaster, and we need to understand that, okay? So we need to be able to look comprehensively at things as well as multiple years. I recommend that we have the finance department do some modeling, do some, you know, examination of these things, working with the finance committee, economic development committee, et cetera, to develop these reviews. These large decisions like this are too complex not to have a very good, comprehensive, multi-year financial model so that we can make good decisions. With that, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Roy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other?
Can I ask him some questions?
Yes, I do want to just see, can we stop sharing his screen unless you do need to see the screen?
I do not.
Anybody online who has any comments they'd like to make related to this hearing, just put your hand up and we'll give to you when we can.
Roy, I just want to express, first, I want to express my gratitude putting in the time just as a resident to try to think outside the box and find solutions. It's what Lancaster needs. I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
The next thing would be, you know, it, it sounds like you're, the goal that you're looking for is what we all want, which is to reduce the residential tax burden. That's what everyone wants. And you're proposing that through, I'm not going to choose the best words here, you know, manipulating the percentage that residents pay versus the existing businesses pay, right? You want to basically increase some of the burden on businesses, existing businesses. Yeah, and, and I get that. I, I guess I would respectfully disagree with that approach. That's not, there's nothing wrong with that approach. What I worry about is the long-term implications of making Lancaster less desirable to commercial and industrial, period. So I'm in the boat, I think, as everyone knows, for some larger, longer-term opportunities that are going to bring in millions of dollars. I'm optimistic that that's going to be the way that we're going to achieve fiscal stability, by bringing in more businesses, not necessarily by splitting rates and taking from existing businesses, right? That's my opinion. That said, I would, I would love an opportunity to, like, when I'm thinking about voting on this, right? And I, I have no idea how the businesses feel, existing businesses. They've been with us for a long, long time. Is $3,000 a lot? Is it not? I don't even know how many million-dollar buildings we have assessed, commercial properties in Lancaster. Probably less than five would be my guess. But...
I don't have that number.
But I mean, I want you to know that I'm very grateful for the, for the work that you put in, and I hope that you will continue to put it in. I just, I guess I want to articulate my position and articulate your position. And here, if, if, if I'm thinking about it maybe wrong, like, what I'm trying to say is, we may just have a difference of opinion, or am I thinking about it incorrectly?
Okay, I would, I would just share, and I hear and understand your, your position. And I hope that you're successful in bringing in lots of new businesses so that we can all rise, if you will. A rising tide lifts all boats. My observation is that many Massachusetts towns have a split tax rate. I'm thinking it's about a third, but I could be off, okay? And some of them have a very significant increase in the commercial rate. And that has given many of them the ability to fund big, big things that they need to do in their towns, schools and other sets of things they need to do. In fact, I, I understand that some businesses have said, we like to look for, we move to a town, we like to look for a town that has a split rate because what we observe is that that makes it more affordable for people to live in the town. And our employees have a better chance of living in that town if you do that. And there's, they have a preference. So some, some businesses are there. So I would just share that as other pieces of data.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just, in the interest of folks who are online, who might want to make a comment, I would just say, these are more comments, so don't, don't feel any to respond. But the, Clinton went to a split rate, and my understanding is that they regret it now and are trying to find a way back to a single rate. So I think that is...
Interesting.
Yes.
Okay.
And I didn't just hear it from my brother and cousin around the select board, but from other people in town who are, who are very concerned about it. And also, I do know a business in town who, when we discussed the, I discussed the override with this person, and he has a building that is worth roughly about $1.1 million. He has tenants, and he was concerned about how he was going to deal with that expense, which was far less for him than $3,000 a year. So I do think, and he was just moving into that building, and I think he probably would have made a different decision had he known it was a split tax rate. But I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I didn't tell you who he was, so it's fine. But thank you, Roy. I appreciate it. Do you have any questions for Roy before we go to the two folks online?
No comments, but...
Thank you. And I, I go with Jason's, I mean, first of all, I celebrate how active a citizen you are. I appreciate the work you're doing, and we want to keep these conversations going. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Kendra's hands up first, then George Franz.
Hi, thank you. Kendra Gibson, 402 Open Way, speaking as a resident. Oh, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay. Sorry, I have the fan running in the background. The only thing I would caution, and again, Roy, great work as always, great presentation, lots of valid points, so I see both sides of the coin. Coming from a farming background, starting off as a very small family farm, and over the years, back in the 80s, evolving into a much larger operation, both dairy farms and cash crops like soybeans, kidney beans, corn, et cetera. The, I would caution if this were to go further when you say small family farms won't have as big of an impact as the larger farms, especially the ones with 61A. We had, I think folks forget that these farmers, and we have some really large parcels and land, Harper's is the first one that comes, for example. They work really hard, they put out some fabulous produce. The, even a small financial impact like that targeted towards them because they're larger and have a lot of acreage could have a lasting impact on their financial viability. Their profit margins, and I'm speaking out of a turn, I don't know their books, but historically, farmers aren't raking in the dough like commercial crop operations that you find out in California, et cetera. So it would be sad, considering how much respect I have for those farmers, knowing what the work was like because I grew up doing it, that so much effort would be put in and they're getting, they have to pay higher taxes than, let's say, me and my backyard. If I have a couple of goats that pop out a baby here and there because they're, they have a lot of acreage. And I know a lot of folks would have that concern also. So it's just, just because you're a big farm doesn't mean you're breaking in millions of dollars in pure net profit. So, thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Kendra. George?
Thank you. George Franz, 122 High Hill Drive, speaking as a private citizen. I have to admit, I was somewhat shocked to learn that 87% of our tax return comes from residential homes. I should have tuned in that, you know, because we all know, looking on from the disparity between residents and businesses. The change that's proposed, that's 85% for residential, is, is very marked. And yeah, it will save homeowners a few bucks, and yes, it will cost individual businesses, particularly small businesses, a little chunk. But, but it's a symbolic change. It is going to make a big difference in the total outcome of things. And so one of the things that I think is, is crucial, frankly, at the, at the master plan meeting on Saturday, I, I soon found an unusual thing, you know? I'm on the planning board, and you know what? The planning board doesn't do the planning. We do permits. We do spectral conditions. We do stuff like that. But what was happening, what was beginning to happen at that, at that planned meeting, the master plan meeting, was something quite different. That's the sort of planning that I'm more accustomed to, where people sit around and trade, it is unencumbered by open media law because here we are, we're all the same meeting. Well, I, I felt that that was important. And what it drove me to is the fact that the Economic Development Committee, which no longer exists, should be a group that is, that is task attracting businesses to come to Lancaster. And yeah, you know, particularly when you're looking at Lancaster, there's the whole infrastructure problem. But I think, I think, given the, given the charge, the Economic Development Committee could really make some, some favorable change in attracting to businesses to Lancaster. Provided we didn't skip from Roy at first.
Yeah, we're having a tough time.
Very much.
George, George, we can barely hear you at this point. It's very crackly. But, do you have any final comments? Okay. I know Dave has to leave. Yeah, so we are, we're out of public responses so far, so that's good. Okay, the action we take now is, we do have to close the...
Can I ask my questions?
Uh, yep. Quickly, he's got to go, so.
It's, it's okay. It's not...
Well, I think he'd like to be here when we have a vote.
Well, then, then hang on, Dave. But it's, first, thank you. Thank you for...
Sorry.
It's a public hearing, and I... It's a public hearing, and I have to ask the questions, and they...
No, it's all right. I just want to make sure we ask about the, like, yeah.
First, thank you for excellent presentation, Dave and Bobby Joe working on that. And also to Roy, it's helpful to have this constructive discussion. In past years, I've questioned whether or not it was time for a split tax rate. And the consensus at the time was that it was not. Lancaster is at a different place now. And I recall, I look, reflect back to a hearing that I went to that was commissioned by the Planning Department when Noreen Piazza was here for business development. It was attended by local businesses and myself and others. And Barry Bluestone, who is a, was director of the Dukakis Center at the time, which is a planning department, looked at Lancaster and our attractiveness for businesses. Because that is something that I think continuously, something we can get everybody in this room and probably on the screen around town to agree on, is that Lancaster needs to improve their tax base. And his words were that a split tax rate was something to, or higher tax rates were not to be feared as a, for attracting businesses. Rather, the things that we, a split tax rate would bring you is a greater tool to financial stability, which would allow you, most importantly, things like infrastructure, to improve roads, sewer, police and fire, and have a more viable basis for businesses to locate. Second, and Roy alluded to it, is that businesses who are trying to attract skilled employees who would be buying and living in the community appreciate good schools and the lower tax rates. So that is...
We're up against the clock in several ways.
So Steve's passing notes.
Yeah, he has his questions.
So that's not, that's what I'm saying, is Dave could go. I have no problem with it.
But we're still up against the clock.
Okay. I should have asked my questions earlier, I guess, and then let you go after. But, so, so at any rate, that is one of the things. And I would look to the examples of some of the, Roy spoke to the towns that have not been, that this would not affect our local towns. One of the local towns that I look to that has done an excellent job at attracting businesses is Berlin. And they've long had a split tax rate. Their tax, their residential tax rate is 57.9, which we would not even approach if we split. We would talk about their business tax rate is 27.84, which is a much, much bigger split than we're talking about. So...
Just ask me if you have questions.
I don't have a question. I have comments.
Oh, I thought you said you had a question.
No, I'm sorry. I have comments. I'm like, same as yours and Jason's. So I guess is, my question, if you want to form it as a question, is that with 80, more than 80% of our commercial property committed and well underway and zoned aggressively, and with our override affecting people disproportionately who can't afford it this year, people who are on fixed incomes, and are facing the effects of inflation, that this is a time to try it. If both Clinton or Lancaster decided that it wasn't beneficial to them and heard a pushback, then there is nothing that prevents us, or Clinton, or anybody else from returning to a fixed tax rate, excuse me, a flat tax rate. So that is my non-question.
Thank you. All right. Do we have to close the hearing at this point?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The public hearing on tax classification is closed. And now, is there a motion?
Which should the motion, how should it look?
At the bottom of the report. Should we choose that? There is suggested language for a motion. If we decide to stay with the flat...
The Lancaster Board of, the Lancaster Select Board votes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2024 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.000 with a corresponding SIP shift of 1.000, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So I just want to quickly add, I'm open to having a split tax rate. I would like some more thought into it. I want to hear from existing businesses. And I just want to have some thought about the implications for new businesses and whether it's attractive or not. Again, I don't want to reiterate, I don't want to kind of go drone on about it. But we're not going to meet our fiscal stability through squeezing more out of existing businesses. Right? That's my opinion. And squeezing more out of the residents. So I think we just have to think long-term about this, and whatever that may end up being, that's how I would encourage us to think about it. Thank you.
And further discussion?
Yes. If we set the tax rate tonight, we're setting it for the year. So there's no thinking about it until we have our hearing next year at this time. So the impacts to people will be right away, excuse me, not the tax rate, I'm sorry. Thank you, Kate. Just determining if we have a split rate. Pardon me. Thank you. The, so this is a decision that we need to make and make clear. And in the interest of concerns for the residents and the taxpayers, and most of the farmers that I know in town, because it's a lot of attention, and should be, because I think Lancaster should promote their farms, are also residences. So there's a benefit, residence, excuse me, dual benefits to them. So I do think that this is the time with our commercial land dedicated already. We are not deterring people, and if it is onerous, we can return next year.
I would just simply say, I echo Jason's comments on not being closed to the idea. Alex, of course, is open to the idea. I don't think that once we vote on it tonight, we don't discuss it again until next year's hearing. I think we have an obligation and an opportunity to use the next year to drill into these things and ask, we're going to be bothering you, Roy, and asking a lot of questions, but we will weigh what's best in the end for the town. But I cannot thank you enough for bringing the work that you do to the town in your volunteer capacity. You are fantastic, and we greatly appreciate your support. With that, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
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 I haven't gotten to that. All opposed?
Aye.
There we go. 2-1-0. Thank you, Bobby Joe. Thank you, David. And now it is...
Thank you, David.
6:58. So we have time to do nothing. We have time to...
Just about nothing.
Now we have time, if you have one of your, one of your six or seven concerned licenses, we could go over that in one minute. Do you have any one-minute concerns?
Sure.
Which one?
Let's do the most difficult one.
Would probably be not the quickest, yeah.
Well, the Board of Health has written comments in about United...
Which one?
United Ag and Turf.
United Ag and Turf.
And their comment was...
Where is United Ag and Turf?
As far as the number goes?
It wasn't on the list.
Flip it over. Is there on number 15 or anything?
Number 15 is Ram Bishar Nissan.
Okay. Well, it was in our pocket as a question, so perhaps it was held to...
Well, it's on, let's, yeah. Any other ones quick? You've got about 30 seconds probably.
Yes.
Dunkin' Donuts, Kimball, Sandy's, Sterling Country Club, Crawford Truck Sales.
35, 7, and 8. You said you had questions.
And 7, 10.
Oh, and 7, 10.
And now it is 7 o'clock.
So...
Yep, it's 7 o'clock. Now we're going to have to go into executive session, so we're running out of time too.
Move to enter into executive session. Discussion with counsel regarding investigation of charges of criminal misconduct and filing of criminal complaints pursuant to GL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 57, and Suffolk Construction, the DCAM 449, Mass. 444, 2007. And to reconvene back into open session.
No, no, we got, and discussion with counsel.
Oh, is that the single executive session? Oh. And discussion with counsel regarding strategy with respect to litigation in the matters of A, King v. Town of Lancaster, and B, threatened litigation against the town by Heather Lennon pursuant to Section 21A 37, and Suffolk Construction v. DCAM 449, Mass. 444, 2007, and to reconvene back into executive session.
I'm not going to open session.
Oh, reconvene back into open session?
Yeah.
Yes.
And do we need to add anybody to the executive session? And how do we phrase that?
And to allow...
And to allow Chief...
Police Chief Everett Moody.
Police Chief Everett Moody to participate.
And counsel.
And counsel.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Folks, we are in executive session, so we will be asking those who are not listed by Jason on the motion to please leave the room.
For those who have to come.
We are reconvening. We are back in open session. Thank you very much. I know, but we are, as far as the good people, I'm still in my guess, though, they're not concerned. I would suggest while we are getting Zoom set up, Alex, do you have, can you take us through Dunkin' Donuts, Kimball Farms, Sandy's Restaurant, Sterling National Country Club, Crawford Truck Sales, or Route 2?
So let me give you the big, let me give you the top down. And I did not correspond with the numbers because we think differently. Mine was with departments. So we asked all the departments to weigh in on these applications and have...
It's pretty much upside down.
Well, just, thank you. I was going to give that to...
Oh, yeah.
Pass, Kate? Would you like that?
Please, thank you.
So the town clerk had, was very thorough and looked at Ira Toyota, which is where Greed is, Coke, or Coke, Toyota, RBI Motors.
Okay. And?
And Sandy's 117 Auto Parts, and they did not have business certificates on file. So I would suggest that we approve those with the proviso that if they need, and I asked Kate, do they need to have business certificates on file to be in compliance?
Yes.
So therefore, rather than hold up this process... There's these. There you go. So I would suggest that we approve these, but that people probably just didn't realize that they needed a business certificate. Thank you, Mandy, for picking up on it. But I would suggest that we give them a provisional...
So what is your motion?
I will make a motion to approve the application for...
For Dunkin' Donuts, Kimball, Sandy's, Sterling.
No, 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 because there's other different ones. For Route 117 used auto parts, Jennifer and Sandy's.
Sandy's, we got.
Okay. Route 117 auto parts.
It's not listed on this.
Okay. RBI Motors, is that listed?
RBI Motors is not listed on the agenda. Oh, yeah, it is. But we already approved it.
Okay.
Yep. That wasn't one you listed.
And Coke Toyota or Ira Toyota, which was...
Coke Toyota. So Coke Toyota and Sandy's. You would like to approve with the proviso, make a motion to approve with the proviso that they file a business certificate with the town clerk. Is that the motion you're wishing to make?
It is.
Okay. I will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Recording in progress.
Pending them submitting their business.
Before the end of the year.
Okay. So there's no...
Okay. Then I will...
I think he's correct. That is...
Okay, so, okay, so let me withdraw that motion. And the department heads noted that, in this case, the town clerk, that four businesses were out of compliance with a business certificate.
Just tell me which ones you don't want to approve tonight. Sandy's, Coke, Toyota. Who else?
RBI, town clerk, Sandy's, and 117.
117's not on the list.
And I suggest that we contact these businesses and make sure that we meet...
I will make a motion to table the license renewal application for Sandy's and for Coke, Route 2 Toyota.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are tabled.
All right.
Now we have...
Crawford Truck Sales, is that on the list?
Crawford Truck Sales is. The remaining ones on your list are Crawford, Sterling National Country Club, and Kimball's and Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay. Crawford Truck Sales needs to go to the, and United Ag, which is not on the list, okay. Crawford Truck Sales needs to go to the treasurer and settle up.
Okay.
So we need to do that, and Sandy's needs to also.
We already tabled Sandy's, so...
I understand that, but just so they know, just so they're aware.
I'm sure they'll be told, other than on public television. So are we tabling, are you making a motion to table Crawford Truck Sales?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. What about Kimball's and Dunkin' Donuts and Sterling Country Club?
Kimball's had a comment that, from our chief of police, that maybe could, maybe since you're here, Everett, you could just speak to the proviso more eloquently than I could. Thank you for writing it down here. You want some notice prior to running events so we don't have the same concern problems we had in past years.
But that's not a continued to renew their license. They met all...
No, I'm not asking a continued...
Excuse me, they met all the requirements for license renewal.
Correct. The, I think the impetus behind that was just that if at any point in time any of these companies were found violating the terms and conditions under which these licenses were granted, that we would reserve the right to be able to revoke it.
Which I believe we had that conversation with them about their patent track or whatever.
Kate, do we have that proviso in any of our licenses?
All of them.
Well, yeah, the MGL that relates.
The licensing says that there's a...
We can revoke a license.
So all of them, are there motions for new?
They would have an opportunity to cure.
Yeah. Second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Kimball's renewed. You know, Dunkin' Donuts and Sterling Country Club.
Sterling Country Club, they were looking for selling...
Dispensing food or beverages to members, yes.
Dispensing food and beverages. They...
Not right now. I'm going to cut on me.
I'm sorry. They have, they have liquor. Do they need a liquor license?
They've asked for this license. I think we should give them, give them a reject for this license.
Their liquor license isn't with this town.
It's their clubhouse and building.
And it's okay that they wander around with liquor?
This is for the course.
They're not selling it on the Lancaster portion. Okay.
So is there a motion?
Smooth to approve the license of Sterling.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Dunkin' Donuts.
I don't know which department commented on that. The only one was a department comment, so we will... Did we approve Kalan Farms here? Was that on the...
We tabled Kalan Farms, your request. Actually, Kalan Farms might be on our list, so.
What was the other one you tabled? Sandy's and...
We tabled Sandy's, Crawford Truck, and Coke Route 2 Toyota.
Okay. Basically, anything that had some issues. Dunkin' Donuts...
What's the Dunkin' Donuts issue?
Dunkin' Donuts has no business certificate, so we can table that, just let them rectify it.
So that would be into the same table that we should have done earlier. Okay. So table. Can you make a motion to table?
I'll offer a motion to table Cadet, Nadro, Dunk DBA, Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Aye. All right. Well, that one's clear as mud. Okay. All right, well, that one's clear as mud. Um, okay, um. Next, uh, government study group, government study committee, for the sake of anyone watching, has opted to be tabled to the next meeting since we didn't know how long executive session would last, and so they have done it. Um, next item is public comment. As everyone knows, the Supreme Judicial Court said that we can't tell you what to say, but we can tell you, or how to say it, but we can tell you how long to say it, or decide if you can say it at all. So now we'll enter into public comment period, two minutes pop. Um, as always, if you're online, please put up your digital hand and then state your name and address. Seeing no one online, public comment is closed. Um, and now we are on to administration budget and policy, which is the last item on the agenda, other than to tell you all that the select board's next meeting will take place on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, in this very room at six P M. So mark your calendars, set your D V Rs. Uh, and now, um, the proposed amendment for the October two thousand and two M O A. Uh, we, as we know, we've received, um, a request for an amendment to the memorandum agreement for, um, the North Lancaster project. Um, at our previous meeting, I asked this board and encouraged townspeople to submit questions, um, in advance to be answered. Those questions have been submitted. Those questions were submitted to council. Those questions were answered, and those answers then submitted to this board, uh, and Kate will take us through, um, those questions, um, after I give the board a chance to make any, um, comments on the answers that they have received. Um, I want to be clear, we're not doing another round of questions and answers. We had plenty of time to submit questions. Um, this is just an amendment to an M O A, not a renegotiating of an entire M O A, and so I would like us to keep things focused on the questions that were submitted either by my colleagues or by citizens and the responses provided by council. So I will now, um, yield to my colleagues and say, do you have any questions about the questions and answers provided by Kate and council? Jason?
I don't know.
Alex?
Um, comments, not questions. Um.
That's done.
Yep, I'm trying to get this up here right now, which I will. So off the top of my head, because I'm going to pull these up, um, first, I looked at the memorandum of understanding in, at M O A. We did it as an agreement.
Yeah.
I use those interchangeably. I shouldn't, sorry, M O A. Um, and, um, the benefit to the town of this, the carrot, as it were, for us to reopen this and do this, is to receive some land, which would probably be conservation land, given its fact that it's a swamp, um, ahead of time. As everybody knows, I'm all for environmental protection, so I was eager to get this land back. However, I don't see any real merit to the town, since the initial M O A already gives us this land.
Over stage time, not.
Over time, right?
Initially, and only when certain stages of development are done. So if the development wasn't done, we wouldn't get half the land.
Yeah, so just, so, um, there's, so there's no real advantage. In fact, if it remains in private ownership, we have minimal tax benefits to leaving it in, um, in private hands. So there's no advantage to the town to get this early. In exchange.
So hold on a second. I just find it interesting that we had this whole argument when we negotiated the M O A about the, and this project, about the importance of getting this land and why won't they release the land, release the land, release the land, and now they're releasing the land, and because it suits, um, it is now turning into not being a benefit. It was an absolute must have a year ago, and now because it's happening, it is not a benefit.
I'd like to second that motion.
It wasn't a motion, but I, it was an E motion.
So that is, first, let me finish next time.
Sure, go ahead.
Before that, but in the, I will answer the, in the interruption there, and the interruption, and what I'm saying is, I was one of the most vocal people to say that this land, which was town land initially.
Yeah.
Was promised to us and reneged on numerous times. Jason and I both expressed frustration as slackman on previous boards about this. Um, I understand that in the M O A, we once again were promised this land and that, and the, we are, if we assume that the original M O A is to be perfected, then we will still get this land completed, used. So what I'm saying is, if we are to have faith in the M O A, that the townspeople that led us, that worked in conjunction with last year's vote.
Yeah.
We own the land. It's given to us land. It is, it is staged based on development.
If they don't develop one square foot, we don't get any of it.
We already have some land based on what Kate said at the last meeting. They've done the transfer.
Right.
So this is the last parcel to be transferred.
Seventy-two acres.
Correct.
Which is a significant chunk of the eighty-six.
It is, and it is wetlands. It's protected by mass general law.
It was wetlands a year ago when it was really important.
And I understand that, and we have it. So it's like double, double dipping. We can't keep on, keep on.
I understand.
I am opposed to that.
What else?
And I see no, that's the only incentive that the town gets, which is hollow at best.
You know, I.
What, so Steve, you can disagree with me.
I disagree because I find it just, I find it just right, it sticks in my craw, that a year ago, this was the most, and we were all the devil for not getting that. How dare they to keep that land in it?
The land was not that important to me.
It was important to, a lot of.
I want the settle, I, I too concurred that the settlement agreement should have been held. I was off where, I was, I was right there with Jason, probably even stricter, that we should have gone after people for not following the settlement agreement. As far as being in the M O U, I don't believe that we're any farther or any closer to getting it, because I.
You just said it was ours.
I, I'm saying is that if you, there was a big if, if you believe that the M O A, that anything will be built and the M O A will be, um, completed, then based on that promise of a year ago that the board entered into with the Capitol Group.
Yeah.
Okay, we will have that land. And the other thing is, is there a risk to this, to the town by not taking the land early? And my answer to that would be probably not, because we already have, um, we already have it promised to us and it is protected by state law.
Okay.
The second thing is, what we're giving up in return.
Is what?
Is we're giving up, um, they have asked for us to direct the building inspector to allow signs, which are already allowed by right under zoning, so there is, so if they follow.
Sorry, just to be clear, I want to make sure that they're not directing the building inspector to do anything. I just want to make sure, because that puts him in a, in a, that statement is.
So what I read.
But so you're saying they're asking for signs, which you just said were already approved?
So they, the process to get a sign is that they apply for a sign.
Yeah.
If it's the appropriate size, it goes to the C B A, they, well, it's actually the planning board, if they, if it's the appropriate side, size, and that is approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so it does not have to be in there? If, if something is out of, there is no merit to them? Um, and it says.
They're getting a lot more than seventy-two acres, um, by getting a sign?
We already have the seventy-two acres promised to us numerous times, numerous times.
But this delivers on the house.
And if you believe, uh, it's like fool me once, fool me twice, how many times have we been fooled by first settlement agreement?
But that's why this is, this is actually promised and will be delivered on when we, when we pass this amendment.
That's what we said a year ago, that things were going to get, start getting built and all that. So.
You, you're arguing both sides right now. You're arguing both sides.
Well.
But you're telling us the, the big giveaway, we're giving them is a sign for seventy-two acres.
No, I'm saying that the seventy-two acres has, is ours, if you believe that the M O A is going to be executed, right? Okay?
Right.
If they want a sign, which is already allowed under zoning, we don't need to open back up this M O A. The second item that they have asked for, which is much more troubling tonight, is the permission for outdoor storage of materials, which is, there's lines in here which refer to our bylaw that I looked back on our bylaws, and there, it's not the same language that appears in our bylaws.
Yeah, so you're saying council's response was inaccurate, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying council did not, I don't know if they looked at our bylaws. It wasn't, it wasn't one, it wasn't one of our questions. We're sticking to our questions, because that's what we're supposed to do.
I know, but she's not giving you an answer to your question of whether or not they looked at our bylaws, and they did.
I didn't have a question about whether they did.
You just did. You said, I don't know if they did. And now we answered that. They did. Now you do know. The more you know.
Okay, the more you know. The fact is that we have, and, um, that we are, that duty of outdoor storage of materials, reviewing that, developing a plan, developing a process, is my concern with this is process.
Yeah.
This belongs to the planning board to monitor, and there are good reasons that most cities and towns have a provision for this. Let me finish, sorry.
I'm just moving my chair closer.
That most cities and towns have this provision in their bylaws. There are many towns that have imported or businesses or institutions that have imported materials that are hazardous, um, some unwittingly, some, whether it be from the big dig, anything else, and it become, and then it is a detriment. The reason that we want it developed.
To be very clear to everyone here, we're not getting any big dig stuff brought into Lancaster.
No, and that is the reason that we have a review and we should, need to support our by, we are an autonomous board, as is the planning board.
Yes.
They have the right to permit this. We should allow them to do that. Um, and, uh, that is, that is, that is critical to me, that we, that we allow them. I don't even think it's legal, to be honest with you, and that we didn't get into, but that's.
But council did.
Yeah, council looked into it, and they find it's, uh, under pre-existing use.
And let me look. They talked about earth removal, and our previous council.
But we're not doing earth removal.
They, they didn't talk about removal.
No, because there's no earth removal taking place there.
So what is the pre-existing use? Because they haven't done outdoor storage of materials.
Yeah, they have.
Well, without, do they have a permit? No, they have only.
They had a permit that expired in November of twenty-one, right?
That's earth removal.
But in that permit, they allowed on, on-site storage of materials. So as part of that permit, it was covered as pre-existing.
Only a permit to that. And our previous town council, Judy Cutler, who worked for K P, so, who was a land, went on to be a land court judge.
Good for congratulations.
Made it quite clear that permits are distinct. They have a beginning date and an end date, so there is no grandfather, this is.
I appreciate that, but our council, we pay now, not someone we paid a long time ago, gave us this material.
That's why we have judges and juries, because two councils can.
And when we pass this amendment, if we do tonight, then a judge and a jury can go after it.
Two judges, I mean, two councils disagree all the time.
I just want to be saying, in a public setting, you just gave a legal opinion to a lawyer who's now a judge.
No, she's since then gone back.
Sorry, I just want to be very clear. We're not, like, we're not assigning a legal opinion to Judy, whatever her name is.
Judy Cutler.
Yeah, we're not.
Can I please finish?
You can, but I just, like, let's, we asked our lawyers, who we work with every day.
I understand that.
To give us answers. Here they are.
Lawyers are only as good as the information that they're given, and I believe that had they been given.
They were given.
All of the, all of the information that that would.
I will, speaking of given, I will give you as much time as you need to continue your comments, and then I'll turn to Jason for his comments.
Council was given the entire folder that they had?
I'm sure they, I'm sure they were giving the earth removal permits.
Okay, well, it's just because you just.
You just said.
I'm not talking, and I just wanted to make sure. I wrote back council and talked to him about the previous opinions that we, the town, went to court and defended.
He has them.
Um, not about this case, about another earth removal case that talked about trying to exact grandfathering, which is why we were so specific about the way we set up the beginning and the end of earth removals of, of, this is a real risk to the town, because outdoor storage of materials is first, without permit, with a permit and a plan, is really risky, because, to be clear, we're not getting up, um, big dig storage, but we could. We don't know, and we need to be able to support and have a plan, and if, for example, Mike Silva, who is our zoning enforcement agency, had agent, commissioner, had to go out and do this, he is going to need resources, because keeping track of that, and that's done through the permitting process, where you can ask.
Because you're not, as I, he did, look at this and realize this, um, fit under pre-existing use from the previous, that's Mike's judgment, but.
I understand that, and, um, having been and gone through earth removal more than most people, I can assure you that is not what we have been told, not what we went to court for in the past, not what we've succeeded in going to court for in the past. So I think that that is an egregious area, and even if it wasn't, there is no advantage to us, again, um, to take away that responsibility from the planning board. That is where it belongs, and that is where the, that is in contradictory, contradiction to our law, and it should be there. Um, I'll let Jason speak.
No, you finish. Jason, I'm like.
My little hamster fell right off the trail, so I had other things, but I have to think about it. So give me a minute.
No, well, you will go.
When you're done, Alex.
Yeah, we'll let you finish, then him go, and then we'll answer the motion.
I had a myriad of interruptions, so if you could just let me slack myself and do it.
I'll wait.
Yep.
I just want back and forth.
Okay. All right, then you're going to be patient and wait for me to look at this. Oh, one of them is this agreement, both this M O U.
M O.
M O A, excuse me, and the past M O A, um, involved two parties. Um, and we, the Capitol Group asked for this, these concessions, um, but the other party, Boucher, is, have they been party, are they able to, willing, is any been, has any discussion had been, happened to them?
So council clarified the ownership of the land and.
Sent you.
It was all sent to.
The seven oh two L L C, which is Boucher and Capitol.
So all of that was clarified in the materials you got, you received.
Correct.
So, yes.
And that's why I'm asking this question, because there's two parties. That's not the answer to my question, is there's two parties. All the communications I've seen and talked to.
But council sent you the, the, basically, who is the part, the managing partner that we are to deal with, which is how it always has been.
Which is the red line version that you have in front of me.
That lays out exactly that we are talking to the right people.
So it's just one party?
One party and one party over.
I thought that the preamble of the forward talks about, yes, yes, yes. So we are in.
We are talking to the right people.
Okay, Jason, continue. I am done right now.
When, when he's done, we're done. We're going to move to a lot.
I'm not surprised.
I mean, we'll have Kate go through any of the questions and answers that we had that she, that we haven't already hashed out, um, although I think we've covered a lot of them. Um, but Jason, do you have any comments?
I'll wait till Alex is done. I have one waiting.
Kate, do you have any questions? Do you, or any, any things that we didn't, I mean, I feel like going through all the Q and A that we've done, that we've addressed them.
Um, no, I mean, if there's something that's missing that I can, I can get to you, that's, um, that's fine. I know council sent the deed, um, and then what I have, I had given a revised version, um, and then it, just a clean one, because it's a little easier. Um, but in the revised version, it has, uh, Chris Heap's comments, and then I know that there was a separate email that went forward with the sign information referencing the bylaws, and then I know that Chris Heap also sent over the information on the zoning bylaws and, uh, Mike's, um, uh, opinion on that.
Yeah.
So if there's something you're missing, just let me know, and I will.
And if we were going to open this back up, and I know you said this is about the questions that were asked, one thing, council did say that we could ask for concessions by mutual agreement. So far, they have presented everything to us. People were very concerned with the threat of the forty B, which they filed in town, and that was supposed to be withdrawn with the passage of the forty R, which has passed, and it hasn't been withdrawn. Now, he did say that the, it doesn't have a formal process in the language in the M O A, but I think that that's a. but I think that that's a fair thing to ask, that they be formally withdrawn, because that's been something that has caused people angst, and it is no benefit if that is to be suggested.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Alex, are you all done?
Yes.
Cool.
Uh, so I do want to follow up, actually, on something that Alex talked about, and it's really my only question. So, the original agreement had three parties, right? Um, and what I took away from the conversation just now is that there's no longer a need to involve Steve Boucher, because none of this entire development opportunity involves Steve Boucher, is that correct?
No, uh, the, the way their business, my understanding, Kate, their business arrangement has seven or two, uh, as the lead partner who negotiates these matters. That's my understanding.
That's correct, that's my understanding.
Because, excuse me, Alex.
Yep.
I was super patient, all me, I know.
Very patient.
So, so the original intent of that was that we didn't want one of the three parties to point at the other and go, it's their fault, and the other to go, it's their fault. I just want to be clear that we are not going to need to negotiate anything with anybody other than the folks who are on the MOA here, is that correct?
That's correct. We did a, a deed, um, search, entitled search for the land, and it's 100% owned by.
So I'll be, I'll be clear that that is fantastic. Thank you for doing that and, and getting that in place, because that was a big risk for me in the original MOA, when I was partaking in it, is, you know, you don't want to have all these crazy, different parties you had to manage, so, um, when I saw it on there, and Alex brought it up, it was good that, that that got mitigated. Um, and then just, and then finally, it sounds like we're pretty happy with this, to Steve's point, I think he probably said it more eloquently than I will, um, the biggest feedback we got from residents was they wanted the, they wanted the land, and the two of you were able to accelerate that for the residents, and I hope some of them can find ways to be happy in that, in that win, uh, because it is a win for the town. But overall, Kate, you're satisfied with this, and you're comfortable with it going forward? Do you feel like it puts Lancaster in the best position to be successful?
Yeah, I mean, they asked us for the concession, and we fired back with what, at the time, I thought was the biggest thing that we had heard people were unhappy about.
Awesome.
And so that was the negotiation.
And that's the key point, Kate, that you're bringing up. You said the town should be able to ask for concessions. Alex, this, when they first came to us with a proposed amendment, it did not include the transfer of all the land. So that was a concession that Kate, um, I had to leave the meeting, Kate, um, was unequivocal with them on it, and said, you want us to even consider this amendment, giving us the land in its entirety right away is the concession, based on the comments we were having from people, sorry.
I give to the both of you for that. Um, so now that everybody's had an opportunity to talk, Mr. Chair, are we looking for a motion?
I believe so.
Okay, so which item was this?
Uh, it is, item, what's the, um, that's section five, there's no real motion written there.
Proposed amendment.
The one question in here, if I, if you mind, if you don't mind, it's section seven of the thing, requires a date, um, by which this would expire, a term ending on, I would suggest to the board, but I'm unmanageable to any number, uh, 12/31/25, so it's not a forever agreement, it's two years, needs to be dealt with.
And so what happens in that instance?
Uh, I'm aware we can renegotiate the agreement. I just don't want to give it a forever timeline.
You talked about for the whole, I mean, I didn't know what section you're looking at.
The amount.
Extending the whole MOU, or the transfer of the land, and that kind of thing.
The transfer of the land will be done, I believe, on execution.
For 10 days of execution.
An execution.
Oh, that's for limiting the use of property.
Yes.
Oh, I, I, what I thought I heard you say is that the MOA would.
This is the stockpiling piece.
Ooh, I was like, what?
No, 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 just, I'm sorry, yeah.
And in your, Mr. Chair, your advice was 2025?
Uh, 12/31/25.
So, uh, I would, I would make a motion for section seven, um, to use the date of 12/31/25.
Okay. Um, so I think you make a motion to accept the amendment with that.
Okay, so I move to accept the proposed amendment to the Oc, to October 22nd MOA between town of Lancaster and 702 LLC, with the timeframe for section seven being 12/31/2025.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. Um, I understand that Bill De Petrie, with De Petries, I don't know which one, is, um, the managing partner of, based on council, of 702 LLC.
That's with the signature page on his documents.
I know that we're, um, not discussing the court case that Steve Boucher filed.
Good.